Remember somebody saying she's.
Interesting. Talking with her. Or yesterday. If it's done well.
What did they go into, Los Hatch?
Done bad.
Yeah, so it's now just.
That for. Residents. The community also.
Everybody that works at Alpine.
Get one for down. They're there to help them on their eight AM.
I've had some good.
Yeah.
My daughter was.
That's exactly very best.
I got an archery here that I was.
Diet, if anything, they'll shoot you know on the.
Your interaction. To me, they're phenomenal. And then you have the voice when you went all the hikers. It's just the. He's great. But also. So you gotta go.
It's where our city is. So we're going to come home and yes, this meeting this year. This is pretty fun, but once in a while you get people complaining you're shooting up there.
Jay, can I talk to you sometime?
Come from somewhere you knew abouters.
I think I'm getting allergic to hay.
No. Well, Tanner's been allergic to his whole life.
But he was on the phone.
Like, hey, the day, it'll be. It's somewhere about four or five hours. She's inside that cab.
I paid you.
There we are, they'll start recording.
Thirty acres to go for Jake, everything that's on the ground. We'll start.
All right, this meeting in kind of order, this is our city council. Today is Thursday, July twenty seven, twenty twenty three. We're in the Twilla County Auditorium located at forty seven South Main Street. This meeting is being held over who we need and also broadcast over YouTube. I'll start off with the rule call, Scott Drubay.
It's here.
Craig Smith.
Here.
Here.
And Terry Meyer.
Here.
We are all in attendance tonight as well as our recorder, Jen Poole, and our councilor, Ambrose. Traditions are offered a pledge. You have to me. I pledge allegiance to the. On motivation. Indivisible, with the. All right, you can open up for the meeting public comment.
Just had a question for Councilman Drew Bay. If you'd made any progress on that easement.
I have. And I think it's a part of our.
Okay.
Part of our agenda.
Make sure I was on the agenda and. A chance to, after you discuss it, maybe. There's further comment later. That's it.
Daryl Anderson. I kind of wanted to touch base with you on one topic, and I will try to be fast, but there is a little bit of turf to cover in it. I have touched base with a couple of you over the last probably six months on this. But with the approval of the Pid last week, which I'd first like to just say thank you, appreciate that. It's been a long journey and I appreciate your consideration in passing that. But with the approval of the Pid, one of the conditions of the Pid is that any property that's going to be inside the Pid has to have a development agreement. And there's some of that annexation area within the Pid annexation area that we currently don't have a development agreement for. Particularly, I mean, yeah, Erda Estates and Tilby Village. And so we will be bringing a development agreement to you for Erda Estates and Tilby Village. But what we would like to do is actually combine those two projects under one development agreement. And there's a couple of reasons for that. The first one is it will hopefully, and I'm decently comfortable, that it will help solve the Chapter Nine issue. Actually, when we were working on the Chapter Nine, probably, I don't know, four, five, six months ago, John suggested this, and I hope that I'm not misquoting him, he'll correct me if I'm wrong, but he did kind of suggest that maybe a development agreement might be one option for helping to deal with Chapter Nine. So we know that Chapter Nine, Twilla County, Chapter Nine was, I simply put, I think poorly written. And so it has a number of issues. It took us, you know, probably three or four months, six attorneys to get through. The first major issue was, is was there tolling in effect? And so, you know, that's a lot of expense on our part, expense on your guys' part, the city's, also the property rights ombudsman's office. You know, we had four attorneys from the property rights ombudsman's office working on it. Taxpayers have to pay for that. And we got through that. Well, now that didn't clean up all of the issues of Chapter Nine. As soon as we got through that issue, the next question that I asked the city was, when was one of those twelve month windows that's contained in that ordinance, when does it start? And the answer we got back is, well, they run at the same time. I don't think that's right. And so there's just another issue now that we've got to continue to work through. And I think it would just be better for everybody if we were able to, you know, move to a better position than dealing with Chapter Nine. They repealed Chapter Nine for Twilla County. I guess the other reason, or one of the other reasons, I'll hit a couple of them, that we will need to do a development agreement is just what I said, we're going to need it to have that property in the Pid. And so if we're going to be able to use that ground to help pay back the Pid, and we need to have it in the Pid. And so we'll need a development agreement for that purpose. The third one, and I think maybe the most important one, relates to the general plan for Erda City. So if you kind of remember the two different projects, Tilby Village is Joe's, and that's the one that sits between Thompson Smokehouse and the Excelsior Schools. And it actually goes around behind the two existing schools, but that's where the future high school for Excelsior will be. So really, it's kind of the ground now between Thompson Smokehouse and the two Excelsior Schools. Under the current situation, if we keep these two projects separate, Joe will need to use that property to put his residential units on. He has seventy-four residential units approved in Tilby Village PUD. But when we go to the general plan for Erda City, all of that ground is slated in the general plan for commercial ground. And really, that's the better use for it. I mean, it's on the, you know, your current prominent intersection, the four corner, the signaled intersection in the city, right where commercial is probably the most viable. Once we're able to bring in the sewer and water, that's where you're going to get commercial. And if you think about it, that four corner, a vertway in SR thirty-six, we all know, in the future, it'll all be commercial. But if you look kind of in the short term, and when I say in short term, maybe in the next ten years, maybe even a little bit longer than that, two of those corners won't be, because I don't expect the IHC to probably be building a hospital in the next ten years there. Eventually, they will. I don't think there's any doubt. They didn't buy that, you know, just to sit on it and sell it in the future. They bought it because they know they're going to need a facility out here. The other corner diagonal would be the LDS churches. Discussions, again, I'm not in any way saying I am speaking for the LDS church or have deep insight, but in some peripheral discussions, indication is they're probably not going to do anything about for quite a while. I think that we know the history of it, we know the contention and the issues that was related to that property. And the church's current stand is, is that they're going to let that sit for a while. They're not going to open that up in any fashion. So you really have the other two corners that are probably viable commercial, the movie theater, and then the corner that I'm talking about. So my thought is that we really probably need to, if we can, utilize that property between Thompson Smokehouse and the Excelsior Schools as commercial. Well, probably the easiest way to do that is if we're able to combine the two projects under one development agreement, that would allow us to move those residential units over to Erda Estates kind of further off of Highway thirty-six. So I'd really be trading Joe property in Erda Estates to put his residential on for his ground that then we could use as for commercial. It fits your general plan much better. At least for that property, it actually, the Tilby Village property, it fits your general plan perfectly. For Erda Estates, the commercial does go further west down into the property, down into Erda Estates, and will probably, on the far west end of that, probably still need to have some residential that might kind of butt up or even maybe cross the line where the general plan says that there should be commercial. But still, it pushes that residential out into where the general plan says residential should be and gets the Tilby Village property into the commercial area, which I think is a whole lot better for Erda City. It meets the general plan, and I just think that it's better community planning and brings more for the community. It obviously helps us a little bit too, to get some better planning in there, in there also. So just some heads up on that. Our attorney should hopefully finish drafting the development agreement soon. And then we'll have him reach out to John and they can look at it from a legal standpoint. We'll be submitting it to the city so it can go through planning and zoning and then eventually up to you guys. So just kind of want to touch bases with you on that. Thanks.
Do we have anyone online, Jen?
Oh, we have no hands raised online.
Single other public comment, and move we close it. Oh.
I have information on item number nine. Would you like the information during public comment or?
Let's close that public comment.
Second.
Then move in second, public comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Chair moves that be approved in that July thirteenth.
Second.
Move in second, we approve these minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes proved. Turn the time over to Terry Meyer.
Okay, first, now that we're on our new budget, the audit has started on our old budget. And part of the audit, I mean, I've been getting calls and papers anyway. The hamster's turning the wheel. And part of that is that we have to disclose the lawsuits. Now, I know we have, still have the ongoing six mile lawsuit. Now, is the airport one, is that an official lawsuit now too, John?
Been far.
Can anybody think any others?
What is the date on that?
Period, does that include now?
We have to report each audit deal, the ongoing lawsuits and stuff. It's against the city.
Tell Dave to write me the letter and I'll respond.
Okay, and then on another thing, we got two subscriptions that are up for renewal. We got the Civic Review and the Go Daddy. So I just need everybody to say yay, go ahead and renew these or if we're going to counsel.
Which is the Civic Review?
That's the computer stuff that Jen uses for all the business licenses and all that.
Yes, we would be in deep trouble without it.
And then another one, she's got some training coming up that she wants to go to. So I know we have it in the budget for travel and that stuff, so I think one was back in St. George, was that the?
Yeah, there's two trainings coming up. There's one in September down in St. George, that's the Utah Municipal Courts Association. That one's Wednesday through Friday down in St. George. Then the second one is the Utah Business License Association, that one is in October, and that one is just in Park City. And I've been talking with Nikki from the county, and she's offered to let me room with her for that one in Park City. So if we do the one in St. George, I'll need hotels covered and things like.
Either way, I just think we just go ahead and approve her to go to those trainings and then we don't have to worry about it. Anybody problem with that?
I think, I see nothing but head nods.
I'm in favor.
Now for the big stuff. Deposits for, since the thirteenth of July to the twenty-sixth of July is ninety-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Of that, six thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars and eleven cents was from strike transfers, which was business licenses and permits. Eighty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and two cents was from the transfer from the PTIF account to cover the, oh, you'll see when the bills come out, that, and we got our payment from Rocky Mountain for franchise deal. So here's the checks written. Twilla County Sheriff, seventy-four thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars for the last quarter, fourth quarter. Sheriff again for dispatch, eight thousand two hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents. CVE Group for our Google Workplace and Voice and stuff, three hundred and ten dollars and thirty-nine cents. Enzyme Engineering, six thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents for a total of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. And we had thirty dollars and twenty-one cents on the credit card, and that was paid on the twenty-fifth, and that was our monthly fee for Microsoft and Adobe. That's it. Any questions?
Item seven, storming the grains discussion. Is that you?
That's me.
All right, how about it?
So I guess it's a discussion. We've, you've got two applications in right now for subdivision approval for final Sunset Acres is one of them, and the other is Majestic View Subdivision. On Majestic View, the applicant has shown a detention basin on one of the lots that would be, no, excuse me, not owned lots. It shows it as being owned and maintained currently by Twilla County, because that's how the application started two years ago before Erda City was official. Well, since then, that will need to be changed if Erda City wants to own and maintain detention basins. On the other application on Sunset, it has the detention basin proposed and shown on the, one of the five acre lots, it's on in the subdivision. Discussion portion or piece that I met with Rochelle about and discussed is just to talk about what the county has experienced in the past, what we've seen in Twilla City, what seems to work, what doesn't seem to work, and just kind of have ideas so the council can make an educated decision on how they want to move forward and proceed. I imagine this will change and evolve over time as Erda City gets its feet underneath it. As you, if you get a parks department, this may change, and I'll elaborate more on that. So all of you know Stansbury Park, all of you been into Stansbury Park, many of their parks that they have are detention basins. Those are maintained, however, by the service agency. So when developers have come into Stansbury Park, they propose their development, and part of their agreement is to put in the improvements for the park, and then they turn it over to the service agency, they pay impact fees, and then the service agency then maintains that as a park afterwards. Erda City does not have that. Twilla County hasn't, doesn't have that either. So that's not something Twilla County has practiced. So they've tried different and implemented different practices over time, and again, it's progressing and, in my opinion, getting better over time. In Lake Point, they've tried to put, and in Erda, they've tried to put basins on lots, but all they do is maintain easements, and then what happens or has happened is the landowner, two or three owners down the road, they bury in, they bury the basin, and then the hundred year storm event occurs, and then basements get flooded. So then people come back and say, what happened? How did, how did this happen in our community? And then after research, you find out that fifteen years ago, when the development was implemented and put into place, there was a pond that was there. And over time, the owner had buried it, and it wasn't the third owner, it was the second owner. So that's not ideal, and the reason why that happens is because, or this is my opinion, the reason that happens is because it wasn't fully improved. The basin is dug, and the developer leaves, and all it is is a weed patch after that. Homeowner comes in, they go, heck, it's a weed patch, I don't want a weed patch, I want to put my lawn in, I want to put my playground down, I want to build a shop, or whatever it may be. Well, it goes unfinished. So what, at the county, they implemented in Lake Point, they said, look, the developer wants to put the pond on a lot, we want to see the pond dug in, but we want to see it landscaped with cobble rock and filter fabric and have it be done with the development and signed off for and bonded for with the development. So the developer pays for it, it's done. The homeowner is less likely to go in and remove all the cobble rock to the basin if it's complete. They can see what it is, otherwise it just looks like a big divot in the ground. That's functioned fairly well. What works even better though is where you can turn it over to a park and let him, like Stansbury Service Agency, and let him maintain it and own it. You don't really have that luxury. So in these two instances that are presented, the Sunset Acres and Majestic View, Majestic View's pond is much smaller than Sunset Acres, it's a smaller development. On the smaller developments, in my opinion, I believe that the pond should be part of one of the lots and then landscaped in, whether it be with rock. I think it should be rock, I think it should have filter fabric and have big cobble rock in there and be established and approved by the city before the bond is released to the developer, just like the bond for the road improvements, swell improvements that is completely done. But that Erda City maintains an easement over that, so that if the landowner goes in and buries it, Erda City has the right to go in there and dig it back out, but then lean the property and have the homeowner that buried it pay for it. But on the bigger development, on the five acre lot pond, that pond is really long and shallow, it takes up about an acre and a half. I think after the developer digs it in, Erda City should own an easement to that, don't own the property, own an easement to it, have them reseed with native grasses, let it come back as, what's a, what's a good seed mix, a native seed mix?
Crested.
A crested wheat grass that comes in, and then they can make it a pasture and let the horses or cows that they have, somebody in a five acre lot is going to do that, let their horses and cows go in and graze it. But it's, it's improved already. If it's dug and nothing seeded, it's hard for anybody to go in there and do anything, but have the developer pay for that upfront, and if it's planted at the right time, you can get a pretty good stand of grass in there, and then it looks like it was before the development took place. And then the fire department can manage it on the, on the fire side, saying, is it getting grazed, is it getting mowed down? It gives them a little bit more flexibility to maintain those areas also.
So if a retention pond is required, how can somebody fill it in?
They just don't know what, they don't know what it is, so they fill it in, they don't recognize that it's an issue, they buy the lot. The first owner that comes in and builds a home, they know what the lot is, like I said, the second or third owner comes in, they don't really understand what it is. That the water conveyance system ends up there. There's an example, I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up or not. Scott, you said you were going to go into, brother, Mr. Toome asked a question. Is that where we're going to talk about this question, or is that later on?
I'm not prepared to talk about that.
I've got, I've got some information about that, actually. I don't know if it directly answers his, some of his questions, because I wasn't in the meeting, but he approached me a few months back and asked about the easement, at the time, I didn't know what it was for, and his question is legitimate, what's this for, why is it there, can it be vacated? And my response was, is potentially, but you'll have to go to the city council and ask the question, and I believe that's what he's done. It's just, it's the proper way to approach it. I've gone back and I looked at the plat, and on his lot, Lot One, Lot Eleven and Lot Ten of England Estate Subdivision, there is a thirty foot wide drainage easement conveyed to Twilla County. Well, when Erda City became a city, it's now conveyed to Erda City. Erda City owns that thirty foot wide easement across Lots One, Eleven and Ten. It's kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of strange. What was that? It stops short, it clips into nine, but it's not all the way through nine. I'm looking around at the class, so that being said, I did some research, I poked around the county and said, where is the design drawings? What, what was approved, why is this easement there? There's usually a reason for it. So, all right, after doing some digging, and then I reached out to the engineer of record for the subdivision, the reason why that is there is because that is the detention basin for that subdivision. So Erda City has the right still to manage that and maintain it if need be, but the owner, landowners that are those lots that are affected by it are to leave it as it is, because it's the detention basin for that subdivision. So that's what that, so that's recorded against those lots, just like what would happen if you did what I've suggested, and you'd leave yourselves an easement to, if something happened to the drainage swell, that you could go in or drainage basins, you go in and improve it if required. But the ideal situation is that there's language on the plat that it's, it's Erda City's shall not be changed, and it shall be improved by the developer at time of development. Does that make sense? John, do you have any concerns with that? No? Anything to add?
I like your option too, where the the city maintains an easement on these things. The developer pays for the low cost landscape solution, and then the city maintains the easement on that. I think that's a good option for us at this stage in the game, till we have something more sophisticated.
As, as Erda City grows and you get a park department, or if you do, I think that maybe you switch towards going, okay, you're going to have these big detention basins, you get a regional facility, let's, I mean, let's utilize that in the community, and you can have soccer fields and football fields and things like that, that's a benefit to the community, but unfortunately, you're not there yet.
Sorry, who would be responsible for that property?
The landowner. So they're going and spray the weeds of the rocks and stuff.
So you say that we would plant crested grass.
Correct.
And the fire department would come in and mow the grass.
No, fire department doesn't mow it, but they have their requirements of saying, because I've got the letters of, on my, on my property, I get letters saying, hey, your grass is a little bit too tall. When are you going to put your fire break in, we're going to give you this much time, I get that letter, I turn horses out. So it's just kind of a, it's just, it's just, it's a, it's a plan that I feel like everybody can work through.
I agree.
We don't want cheat grass, I guess is the reason why. No, I don't like cheat grass. Right. I don't like cheating grass. If we can get some crested wheat back, it seems to stun well at my, my own home, that's what I have planted at my house, and it does well. If I overgraze it, it's a problem. But if I let it seed out, wait until I get the letter from the fire department saying, get it taken care of, that's about the time I can turn my horses out, and it just keeps coming back every year.
Push it to the limit.
I did, no, no, I don't.
Leaving it as part of the law. The city have an easement. Seems like a logical choice.
The city needs to preserve that right to have that facility, it's the drainage system for the whole, that, that community, that subdivision. So the conveyance system that feeds to it is the city's conveyance system. The swells, that's your way to convey water. If, if the swells could handle all the water, you wouldn't see the detention basins, but because developments get, you know, more homes in there, you get the runoff, you got to handle that hundred year storm event. Questions or concerns?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Need any kind of a resolution or an order for them to start processing the finals on these last two subdivisions?
I think we already have ordinances in place on our storm grain stuff.
For the storm grain?
Yeah.
But it's not clear in the current ordinance whether it should be, if it can be deeded or dedicated to the city directly as its own parcel, or if it can be included on a lot. And then just an easement for the city.
A whole lot or a half lot? If it's a whole lot, okay, if it's some part of a lot, I don't. Are you saying that somebody's backyard is going to be the drainage for everybody?
Side yard.
Side yard?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a problem.
I mean, that's a problem.
So their, their one acre, their one acre lot goes to one and three-quarter acres, for example. Or the city gets the easement, but the pond gets improved by the developer.
In, in Majestic View, I, in particular, we're looking at it, there's a three-quarter or almost one acre lot dedicated, and they wanna dedicate it to the city for this detention basin. I think what we're saying is, add it to the lot, make that lot nearly two acres, which may or may not give any value to that lot, but we would have an easement over that detention basin, and it would have to be fully constructed and built out before.
I'd buy that lot at the same price all day long.
I, I would buy that lot.
So what's your hesitation, John?
Well, if, if it's somebody's lot, they think if they're locked, they'll come back in in a couple of years from now and say, we wanna make these improvements.
That's what he's saying, and that's why we maintain the easement on it.
They'll come back and ask.
But, right.
Well, we, we, we know that can happen, uh.
It's, it's happening now, that's the, I mean, that's what Mr. Toone's asking now. And it's just, he's trying to find out what can he do with his property to maximize it. And unfortunately, with the research, we found that it's the detention basin, and you, you can't.
Yeah.
But, but, so it's a valid concern.
I, I know the county in Lake Point, they were making deed restrictions. Then, they, they were going as far as the swells in the deed restrictions, saying you can't, it was part of the deed, you cannot change or alter these in any way. I think an easement would be the same, or do you add the, a deed restriction with the easement?
I think an easement works. I, I, I've done it before.
Sure. The, the only concern I have, either way is fine with me, but my concern with having it be its own parcel dedicated to Eerta City.
Well, I don't think, yeah, I don't think we oughta take ownership.
So then it has to be on the lot, right? How else do we do it?
Jake is saying.
A void?
Nope, but you'd have to create an H O A.
And they're not creating an H O A? Okay, I understand your problem.
But, but they, you put in the cobblestone, so that it, it really looks like something that.
That's, that's supposed to be there.
It, it's, it's fully built out, and it has a easement of record, uh.
Not just, I mean, you started saying it, Jess, that, okay, well, it's fully dug out and, and improved. That can mean different things to different developers. I, I think it needs to be specific on at least six-inch cobble rock with filter fabric below, that's, that's the requirement. So that it's, there's not any, because to some, some people think, well, I'll dig it out, I'll, I, I cut the pond and it's done. Well, yeah, but is it done?
We could say to the city engineer specs. Because it'd be different specs for different developments. Your five acre lots, you're talking about a, a one acre or two acre pond.
Shallow.
Whole thing doesn't have to be ripraped.
Right.
But, a small detention pond, maybe a smaller, deeper one, maybe it does.
So who's gonna maintain it?
That has to come to the landowner to maintain it, to spray the weeds coming out of the rock, that's gonna take, come over time. Otherwise, the parcel, if it gets dedicated, I, I know you said you don't want that either, but if it gets dedicated to Eerta City, Eerta City has to maintain it, and I don't believe there's a mechanism, there's not, there's no way to do it.
I don't think it's a perfect solution long-term, but it's, I think it's our solution at this stage.
It's our current solution.
I think I, that's, that's my, it's, it's a current solution for, until you get other things in place.
Well, someone's got a better idea. So, so Jake's saying we need to solidify that somewhere.
Yeah, probably I'd take it with our ordinance, is to put something there.
So we're talking a, an, an additional ordinance, probably?
Yeah. An amendment.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, do we need to do that amendment before we can finalize these two subdivisions?
You asked me?
Because I, Bob.
What's John saying?
Oh, I'm asking John a math question.
We're okay with it.
I don't know that it matters if the developer's okay with it.
Well, if it's not.
Her decision.
They can push back and say, it's not your ordinance, I don't have to do it. I mean, we can make them required, you know, put in a detention, put a little bit of cobblestone.
At this point, even if we change the ordinance, it doesn't affect them, because their application was put in long ago.
Right. So. I, I asked already about the idea, and kind of gave them, I said, hey, this is the idea. If they ask you to put in a cobblestone, do you have any issue with that? And they said, no.
Do they have any issue of maintenance and easement?
That becomes a homework.
Well, but they're gonna be selling the property, so.
Sure.
You can easement.
Sure, so they'll have to maintain it in the meantime, but.
If they ever voluntarily do it, we don't need it. But we oughta fix the ordinance.
We, we need to fix it long-term anyway, but I, I believe me and Jess are both in favor of, go moving forward with an easement. And two. We, we got a head nod from Kel, so.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see another.
What's that?
Sure that was on purpose?
Got someone in the back.
Yeah, I don't see a better option for us right now. Jake, put me on your calendar next week.
Okay.
All right, uh, Mr. Toone, you, can I have anything?
Sure. On the particular easement that involves my personal property, it's well-maintained. I have it gravelled. I have a fence that I put up there to showing inside of my property line. It's within six inches to two feet of my property line inside of it. There is a ditch that is well-maintained. The roads that access that subdivision have a sixteen-inch culvert. Any water that comes down there, you can't put more than sixteen inches through that, because that's as big as it is. Matter of fact, there's one that's even smaller, that one of the other neighbors has put a nine inch, which restricts the flow even more. For the dozen homes that are in that neighborhood, to have a thirty-foot wide river is extremely unreasonable. We just had a record snowfall, and you know how much drainage we had through there? Zero. We just had cloud bursts the other, just a few days ago. There'd maybe a quarter of an inch of mea puddled in, in different little spots. The.
You're saying on that easement, there's a drainage for it, it's, it's not.
There's a drainage right next to the road. Designed to take all the water that goes, already established there. The extra thirty feet comes in on the, past the property line that you don't need a river in Eerta.
So you're saying it's not a retention pond, is what you're saying?
No, it's not a retention pond. There's a drainage spot right next to the road.
Modified or filled at any point, uh, since you own the property?
No, haven't filled it. I've cleaned the weeds out and made it look nice. Rest of the.
Filled in by a previous owner.
What's that?
Could've been filled in by the previous owner.
No, the, the drainage area is right there. To the property line is, uh.
The, the engineered plans show a retention pond right there.
So are you the first homeowner, or is somebody on it?
I'm the second homeowner.
So the first one might have filled it in.
Yes. And it was filled in with, um, road base.
Yeah, I can tell you.
Three feet of road base, so it's solid. The water that will drain through there is more than adequate where it's designed. And it's well-maintained.
Jake, if you don't mind me picking on you a little bit. So, the owner here, he is telling us that that wasn't, at least to his knowledge, was not designed to hold water. It's got a culvert that drains the water. And so, how is it a retention pond if it's draining water?
I, I, Jessica, there's no culvert, there's no outfall for it.
There is.
On the out, on the design. There are sixteen-inch lines feeding to it, like he said. But he is at the level, and he's, he's at the very, very bottom of the, something, it's downgraded.
So it is designed to retain?
It is designed, I talked to the engineer today, it's designed to retain. Now, the fact that he hasn't seen, I'm not arguing that he hasn't seen it, but it's still designed to carry the hundred-year event, which is required by code.
I see. And we think, we think a previous seller filled that in.
Could have, but, or whether, whether, I mean, not to be cold, but whether he has seen it or not is a moot point. I mean, it's, it needs to be there.
Well, I, I'm. Since Mr. Toone's lived there, I know he's never seen it. I've never seen a drop of water go down that road since he's lived there.
Sure.
In nineteen eighty-three, there was a river running down that road. A, a literal river coming down that road. So, I can tell you in the last forty years, it's happened.
Yeah, in nineteen eighty-three, I remember living on Coleman, and they ran a river down there. And all it had there was a sidewalk, curb and gutter with a couple, a few sandbags. And that was because it came out of the dam. Eerta doesn't have that situation where you have an abundance of water already stored, ready to drain.
And we do, and we had it in eighty-three.
We, we, we have.
Yes. But Eerta doesn't have.
And we don't have.
The same situation with a dam that would release it.
But we still have one, same mountains above us, when, that's where the water comes from.
Yes, I agree with that. The, the most water that's ever ran down there is when the fire department opened it up to just test the, see if their fire heightens worked.
Well, since you, between eighty-three and eighty-four, we were both there.
Yes.
There was a little river running down there, and we were sandbagging Church Road.
Yes.
It, it happens, that's what.
Eighty-three, eighty-four, I lived on Coleman, where they was running water down there, so.
That's what this hundred-year event is. I don't see how we ever abandoned a drainage easement that was required by the state for that subdivision.
What I'm saying is, the ditch that's already there would retain or allow adequate drainage. And the additional thirty feet wider would not be necessary. That's my argument.
Okay, so, this comes.
I'm just saying, the ditch that's already there.
But what you're, so, un- unfortunately, what you're asking for is that the city maintain the water from this development in their right of way for the subdivision, so that you can have that thirty feet back. But that's not, but that's ditch is for, that's long-term. The ditch you want to put that water in should be the conveyance for Church Road. It shouldn't be the retention for this sub, this subdivision you live in. So that thirty-foot easement needs to stay and have its own pond.
Okay. So that was, that was my conclusion also.
Unfortunately, I, 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 I'm not arguing, I get, I get what you're after, but it's not, and it's not what required.
All I have is a fence up there. And a fence does not stop the drainage easement. Fence is not a permanent structure. Mr. Drewby came over and says, oh, the fence is a problem. I'm just saying, the fence that I put up there is not a problem.
Well, if we put it back the way it's supposed to be and dig the whole lot to be the retention it's supposed to be, though.
But he says this is something you're still working on.
No, I'm, I'm done working on it, and I, I've spoken to engineering, and I've spoken to the developer. And I, my apologies to you, Keith. I shouldn't have come down and spoke to you.
I, I hadn't heard back from you, that's why I'm here tonight.
So, the boundaries on the property lines there are moved back by the county when that development was put in, because Church Road is gonna have to be widened at some point. Every new development along Church Road has had to do that same thing. I think the only discrepancy that I hear here is, um, the developer said that this easement is not on your acre. It's a dedicated easement to the county.
On your acre.
But he said it's not on.
There's two different easements, so. There's the road easement and the drainage easements. They're, they're two different ones.
Okay, well, and, and maybe that's where the discrepancy comes from. So, um, since I got, I got wrote it into being the code guy.
Well, you didn't.
So, here's my, here's my suggestion. The fence has gotta move. You indicated that, um, the county told you in a letter to put it on the fence line.
Yes.
If you can find that letter, I think the city oughta pay to move the fence. If you can't find that letter, then I think you're gonna need to move the fence. Because we need to maintain this easement, and we also need to maintain site visibility for people coming around that corner.
Is it back?
Where it fits the road requirements as far as sight.
I don't know. As I drive down there, there's a, there's a blind spot there, you have to get right up to the road before you can see west, Keith.
On a corner, the height and the things, it's back, the edge of the fence lines up with the front of the home, and the front of the home, you can come within twenty feet of that, and it's back at forty.
I understand that. But, but all of that's. Clear zone's forty foot on that intersection.
Yeah, and I've, and I've got more than forty foot there.
And even the diagonal that.
The fence is twelve feet out into the city easement.
Yeah.
It needs to be moved to the south.
That's my recommendation, if you can find that letter. Otherwise, I'm, I'm gonna think that there's a misunderstanding here, and the county told you to put it on the edge of the easement.
County informed me to put up a privacy fence and put it on the fence line.
Okay, see if, please, if, see if you can find that. If you can find that, my recommendation is gonna be the city pays to move the fence. If, if not, we're gonna have to say the fence is in the wrong place, and, and it needs to move.
My next question. You go further west, and you've got Jason White that has a fence even closer to Eerta Church, or the Church Road than I do.
Yes, and there, there's not a new subdivision there, if they ever do a new subdivision.
Coming down.
Well, we're, we're talking two different easements here. The road easement is separate than the drainage easement.
Okay.
His fence and property line is where his old fence is, because that hasn't been subdivided or changed in sixty, eighty years. Every new development in the last twenty-five years that I know of has had to dedicate more room for Church Road for the expansion. So when they do a new subdivision, they force the person doing that subdivision to give up property, so the road will be wide enough in the future. And every one of them, all the way down there, gulls down on the end, have a seventy-foot wide road that goes down to nowhere. It doesn't serve anything, but the county made them put that in seventy feet wide, the whole way down there. Uh, Joe White in Sunset Acres, there's a seventy-foot wide road, Church Road, for half a mile up through there. And it, it gets dedicated to the city. It's because in the future, road will need to be that big.
What I'm getting at is, I think the drainage easement is not necessary because of, it's been forty years plus, and Eerta's drying up, and we're fighting for water every drop we can get, rather than having an abundance. The climate's changing, and I think the elimination of this eas, drainage easement would be more in line for what the future.
I don't think it's a drainage, it's a, it's a.
It's what the easement is, is an easement.
Reservoir is supposed to be a catch basin, right? It's not a drain out, it's the. We're keeping the water right here.
Best.
But it doesn't keep going down.
The best place for that would be the next lot owned by Judy War, Wayne Yu, I think it's.
But Judy War was not a part of that subdivision. We can take her property to put a drainage basin on for a subdivision where it was already done and dedicated. That would be a taking, and, and we can't do that.
We're misnamed.
We won't do that.
It's a retention deal, not a drainage, it's a retention.
It should.
That's what it's listed on the thing, as a drainage easement, not a retention. So, the county listed it as a drainage easement, and that's the exact word.
My recommendation is this, that we don't abandon the easement. If, if you can find a letter from the county telling you to put the fence there on the old fence line, then I'm gonna recommend we help, or we pay to move the fence. But, but we're not gonna give up the easement. Okay.
Anything else on drainage discussion? All right, moving on, city council fee waiver discussion. Uh, this one is how best to accommodate, uh, Eerta Days. Um, this is a community event that's been heard of for forever. Uh, it's something that a lot of cities put on themselves. However, this one's done by the community, and everybody agrees that it should stay right where it's at. And I think, um, that there are things that the city can do to contribute. And I think, um, that there are things that the city can do to contribute, um, by covering their permit fees, uh, or certain permit fees that we specify in ordinance, um, so that that can be our, um, way to support Erda Days.
I think in talking to Chris, I think there's better ways to do it. One thing is she says like the biggest expense I think is that tent. It's like five thousand dollars for that tent. I don't know if that's just to rent it or whatever, so what if the city bought one? And then they had to take that. I said, yeah, the other thing is, is they could have been told here before that, uh, the ballpark is a nonprofit. And if they could tie into that, then we could donate money and stuff to that nonprofit and it'd clean up all that stuff. So I think there's other options we could be looking at as well. That'd be more than just the fee waiver.
Okay. So you're talking about going beyond just levying fees?
Yeah, 'cause the fee, you're only talking a couple hundred bucks or something, but if we bought some of that equipment that they have to spend so much money for, or even the ham, you know, food, or, or do something along that line type of thing.
Yeah.
That it'd help them a little more than just a regular fee.
I think if we could figure out a way to lend financial support.
If they could tie it in with the ballpark, that'd take.
I, I think that's, I think that's a good idea. I don't, I don't wanna own a tent, though. A few years ago, that tent blew down. And that's liability. Plus, it's gonna end up in my barn if we own a tent.
Again?
Like the sandbags.
But you said you needed sand.
Yeah.
Well, um. I think myself, I don't think I wanna buy a tent or donate the cost of the tent.
Or like I said, the food or some of that stuff.
But I, I would. I would like to see their, Erda Days' specific fees covered in that would be the event fee and also the tent, uh, I don't know what it is, the, the permit fee to build the tent.
There'd be a donation, and they don't do donations.
Be a donation. Say that again, Terron.
They don't want a donation. You can't say it's a dona- that's why.
Really?
Yeah, they're not a nonprofit.
Give them some money.
Yeah, they, they can't really take donations 'cause it would have to show up on someone's taxes, so they don't want donations that way. But they did ask if there's some way waiving their fees. I'm with Scott. I don't wanna own a tent, have the liability of putting up a tent, taking care of a tent, storing it. It's actually not a liability of putting it up.
The next one's gonna be a big one too, 'cause I believe she said this is the fiftieth anniversary the next year.
Yeah.
I think what we ought to do is have a couple councils sit down with their people and see, and even people from the ballpark and see if there's a way we can tie everything together legally.
Is there a way to legally waive those fees, John?
Yeah, there is. You'd have to do a study. What you're doing is you're contributing money to an entity that's not the city. And the way you do that is you do a study under, you talk code ten eight dash two, takes you about two-hundred-and-fifty bucks. And the, you, the study determines that it's in the benefit of the entire, uh, residents of all the city. Then you have a hearing, or you give a public notice, have a hearing, and you can do it.
I don't know if I'm a fan of giving Erda Days carte blanche to having every fee waived, because I don't know what it might be in five or ten years.
You have to do this every year.
Oh, you said, yeah, every year.
Yep.
Is there any way of having an ordinance, something that says the city council can at its discretion waive?
It can.
Fees it chooses? And the reason I, I say this, the county council, they, they didn't. But they could have waived the fees for our maps. Uh, I know the county has waived fees for many people before. Could we put an ordinance like that together and would it stand unless somebody challenged it?
We pass a resolution every July saying, said fees are waived.
Every June, we could say we will waive, now, if they have a tent fee and a, an organization fee, it's, it's three or four hundred dollars.
It's probably just a matter of semantics. Rather than waiving it, you pay it. It's probably sixes.
But if we.
Pay it to yourself. So it actually turns out to be a waiver.
If there's a way of doing that, where it doesn't negatively affect them, I don't think anyone in this council would have a problem with.
But to get there, you have to do the study.
There, there is no way of doing without doing the study every round, huh?
Right. I mean, you can do a waiver for a fee for a nonprofit, but I thought I heard you say this was not a nonprofit.
They have not filed for their nonprofit.
Say they get their nonprofit, what, uh, what does it look like then? A donation?
Then just waiver.
Then you can do a waiver without a study.
Okay.
Well, maybe that's our answer.
That very well could be our answers.
Or like I said, tied it in with the ballpark. They're already a nonprofit, so then.
They had purposely kept it separate. I don't know why, but that's their organizations, separate organizations.
She was gonna talk to them about it, or counsel people about that, 'cause I brought that up saying, hey, they are. And I don't know if, she didn't know that they were a nonprofit or not, or, but, so she was gonna talk to some people about it or something. I don't know.
To be a nonprofit, you gotta do more than just fire your articles and incorporate them with the state.
Five-oh-one C?
Be a five-oh-one C three, you have to file an application with the IRS and get recognition.
That's what they didn't want, the paperwork.
Okay.
Maybe that's our answer.
That, that is probably our answer.
We're not doing a study over here. I can tell you that.
I find it unlikely.
All right, thank you, John. Any other comments on this? All right, uh, moving on to item nine, code enforcement items discussion. I don't know who has the lead on this one.
I think Buck has something to tell us about.
Yeah, why don't you lead us off, Buck?
Oh, yeah, Buck was on number nine.
Chomping at the bit. I know. Chomping's the wrong word.
So there's a couple of things that, uh, that I wanna talk about. Um, there's been, um, some comment on fireworks. We've got some neighborhood complaints about how we did fireworks. So, to come out in front of it for next year, we probably ought to look at, uh, doing what Lake Point did, and fireworks should be by permit only. The, the next thing that I wanna talk about is, uh, there's, uh, we're working on an issue on, uh, on a house that has some, um, over, uh, the, the house, the, the, the people in the home are over the normal amount. Um, there's more than sixteen people. So that makes the, that makes the occupancy type an R-two, um, non-transient boarding house. I've been, I've spoke with Colin Winchester, um, about getting a administrative warrant to go in to inspect the home to make sure that there is not a threat of life. He doesn't really want to do anything about it because he doesn't believe he has jurisdiction. He wants, uh, he asked me to call the State Fire Marshal's office to find out if it's under their purview. I, uh, talked to the State Fire Marshal's office and he said, or the State Fire Marshal's office said that because it's a private residence, then the purview is under Erda City. We are going to require a judge to sign off on that warrant, which means we're going to fall under the purview of the county to have the judge to sign off on the warrant. So it goes back to, to Colin's, uh, to Colin's lab. So, wh- before, before I, before we get the administrative warrant, I still need to have evidence that there are more than sixteen individuals in this home. I've yet to do that. I'll work on that as, uh, going forward. What this will do, though, is it will give the opportunity for the residents of that home to come back to, uh, the council and request a change of occupancy from an R-three to an R-two. It would be under your discretion whether you're going to allow that or not. I can only enforce the minimum requirements if they can prove that the residents of that home are fewer than sixteen, then it maintains its, uh, occupancy type of an R-three. That's up to you guys to decide what you want to do going forward. I am going to continue on, uh, getting the, getting that administrative warrant. They, uh, the State Fire Marshal's office has advised that we, when we go in to serve the warrant, we go in with the, uh, city building official, um, the, uh, AHJ, authority having jurisdiction, which would be Fire Chief, myself, and then two deputies to serve the warrant itself. The reason that the building official needs to be there is because the building official is the person who's going to determine what occupancy type it is. I, we live our rules under the determined occupancy type, but it's the building official who, who says what type it is. So he needs to be there to say, yes, there's more than sixteen individuals. Yes, it's an R-two. And then, um.
Michelle, our building official?
It was Jake.
Or is it Jake?
So, I would, I would not, um, uh, I would want, I don't think that we need to go have an inspector go. We'll, we'll provide evidence that there's more than the sixteen people there, then we'll have that building inspector come with us at the same time.
Is it important when that happens?
Any other questions? Everyone's, everyone's doing the pointing their fingers different ways. Um, I think that the fire department is the perfect, uh, uh, people to maintain life safety. That's what we're trying to do, is maintain life safety. Um, one of the other discussions that I had with Colin Winchester, um, was that this is not the only home that we are going to, uh, need to have the administrative warrant on. There is another home on, on Simran that claims that they're a sovereign nation that will also fall under the same pretext of more than sixteen individuals. One of the, one of the, one of the cautions that was given to me by the State Fire Marshal's office was this is a road that has rarely, rarely been traveled. And that's why everyone is not wanting to take the responsibility, because everyone, because it's not, it's not a common occurrence, and we have two in our city. So, let me, let me take the time to go slowly to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and all the di- Is are dotted. But that's my progress. Any questions for me?
No, I think you're taking the right approach to this. Let's be careful and do it right and, but not let it fall through the cracks either.
So, um, the, the pivotal point will be is once the judge, because we're going to, we're going to go and take, um, remove, uh, infringe on constitutional rights. We're going to enter in a domicile without their permission. Castle doctrine, Fourth Amendment, all that kinda stuff. So it will be the judge who has to decide whether we have enough evidence that there's a threat to life safety. And the, the judge will be a third-party administrator of the, of those file, of the infringement on their, their rights. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Oh, one more question, Buck. Well, you're up there. Were there any fires from fireworks?
No, sir. We, the only fires that we had were, uh, natural strikes, um, and both of them were Grant, in Grantsville. There, there was a, a call for a fire, and then that was actually up Davenport Canyon, but we got like four reports off the same fire, um, because the fire was so large. Somebody had decided that they were going to take about, uh, well, a fifty-foot, so about the size of this room, stack it ten feet high, full of pallets, and then light it on fire and have a nice big party. And then everyone all over the valley, uh, was calling it in because the size of the fire looked like it was next door. So we did have a couple, uh, reports from.
They have a permit to do?
Everywhere. No.
Did they need a permit?
Absolutely. Uh, well, they would, it, they couldn't have ever received a permit like that. They would have had to have a, uh, a professional, uh, professional, uh, pyrotechnics artist.
Saying a, a tap and a keg doesn't.
That's, that's, uh, so we had fire trucks going up the road and then the party coming down.
Down the road.
As soon as they saw the, the lights going up the road, they knew that. And, uh, by the time we got there, it was, uh, pretty much out, but it was an interesting night.
So, on lightning strikes, did you get a call from Rush Valley?
Um, so the, the Rush Valley fire, we were on for two days. Um, it was handled by, um, BLM, and we didn't actually do much to it. They just had a hand crew, um, on it. Um, they had.
I don't think there was a fire involved. There was a bull involved.
A bull?
Struck by lightning.
There, yeah, we're, we must be talking about two different fires.
Sure we are. There was no fire here, just, just a big lightning strike.
Yeah, there was that, uh, a couple nights ago.
Well, it was the same night of the, the bonfire. There was, there was strike after strike after strike.
So, the, um, that, that's, that swath had its section of the hundred-year storm, uh, but there was no rain at my house, so it just depends on, depends on where you're at.
Got any more, Scott?
No, I'm tapped out. I think we have to discuss one in closed meeting after this, right?
Number ten, council representative reports.
Planning zoning hasn't met for almost two months. So there's, there's nothing happening there.
So I, I told some neighbors, the way to apply for a conditional use permit is to go to our website. Is that right? Never done it, but.
It's there. It exists.
Okay.
It works well.
All right, general comments.
I got kind of one. It has kind of to do with something we'll talk about maybe later. It's the flag. It saddens me that it's being used as a prop. Because there is a federal flag code, and it states that, that it's supposed to be like raised and lowered from dawn to dusk. But if you have to do, play it overnight, it has to have proper illumination. So like if you got a five-foot flag, it should have a ten-foot radius to cover that whole thing. And it's not supposed to be tattered or worn. I mean, there is a code to do that. It's just sad that some people are not following that. I mean, you can see them on the fences and stuff, but if you're flying at night, if you wanna follow the code, they have to be illuminated.
I have a flag up at night, but it sounds like my light's not big enough. I have a lit, but.
There's a federal, federal flag code that tells you exactly how everything's supposed to be, so.
Gotta look at that. Gotta have you show me that.
I said it's not supposed to be ripped or torn or any of that, too. It should be serviceable, and when it's not serviceable, then you, I think you can take it to the local VFW and they, they can take it from their disposal, so. Since it's been the twenty-fourth and fourth, it's just kinda, 'cause you see them put out all the time, but people leave them out at night without the problem. I mean, you can't do nothing about it, I guess, but that's just not the way it's supposed to be done. And if you're trying to respect the flag, then that's the wrong way to do it.
Anything else?
Move your journey then.
Okay. Are we going to another meeting? Are we going to another meeting?
Yeah, I gotta, I guess we need a motion to.
Oh, yeah, a motion to go to closed session, so move.
But it has to be per to discuss. They have to state purpose.
Move that.
Chair moves, we, uh, move to a closed session per Utah Code annotated section fifty-two dash four dash two zero five one C.
Set a second. Reasonable. Oh, come on. Huh?
It's possible litigation.
You have a second on that?
Second.
We're moving second and we move to closed session on favor, say hi.
Hi. Good call. It's a good thing you're here, John.
Scott, how do you vote me?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
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 Thought we'd be out here in high surprise, not for a second.
And they close at nine or something?
Yeah, we might still make it. See how it goes, we might. Say if they come in at night, we'll be reasonable, if they're staying high. That's, that's my point too.